Melody? Melody?
Yes, yes, Tracy.
Hey, so I'm at the beach and I mean this signal stays up, so I know there's no vote in this meeting, right?
That's correct.
So if I happen to get kicked off and then have to rejoin, is that gonna affect anything?
Um, I think it would be best if you could text me and let me know if anything happens um so that we can suspend the discussion.
So we have to suspend discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully that won't happen, but I can tell that I can tell you get kinda your videos like stops for a second, so it's like slow. That's the only thing I'm noticing, but.
Okay. Well, just let me know if you have any issues and we can work around it, okay?
Okay.
There we go. All right, you're on.
Oh, that's funny.
And away! Five whole minutes.
You two look like you're about to anchor the evening news.
Should I make y'all jealous and let you know what my real background is? Who can't hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. I'm at the beach, y'all, so hopefully I don't get kicked off with this reception. But you, why was your hair blowing in?
Cause we're in the conference room and there's, there's no air here, so I have a fan. Here, how's that better?
Well, see, I could put my, my real background on. Make y'all jealous.
I don't know. Are you muted?
Can everybody hear me?
You're muted.
Vaguely.
But I can't hear them.
They probably can't hear through me.
All right, can everybody hear my voice?
Yes.
Lot better.
But it's very quiet, I can't hear, I don't have hardly any volume here.
I think we're mostly all muted.
Matt's coming to assist with the volume.
Seems like we're having a couple of technical difficulties, we'll get started in just a minute.
All right, Melody, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Outstanding, we got you too. Does kinda look like a news anchor, doesn't it?
I see that Brenda McMillan is not on yet, I just sent her an email with the link just to make sure, or do you know if she's going to be here?
I was not able to talk to her today yet, uh, I was guessing that she'd be uh at home.
Okay, I'm gonna promote John Williams as a panelist because he'll be doing the training.
Speaking of the, the link, is there a reason why it only gets sent out? Uh, a couple minutes before the meeting?
Um, well, we've been sending it out in the calendar invite.
Only cause I had to search for it, I just was wondering why it didn't just come out in an email or something.
Okay, yeah, it's because it's been in the calendar invite. So in the future, I'll send them out in advance.
Yeah, he's the um, the facilitator.
Okay, he's got his hand raised, can we promote him now?
Um, I went ahead and promoted him and um then.
Melody, can you hear me? This is John.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Um, so we'll do a couple things to get started and then turn it over to you.
Sure.
Okay. So Mayor, do you wanna go ahead and start, or do you wanna wait just a minute for?
Wait just a minute, how are we on time on the back end of this thing, is it a full three hours, John?
Uh, Mayor, it, it'll probably run around two, two and a half, just depending on questions.
Okay, so we have a little time to wait, is she clicking on now? Yeah, is she clicking on?
Ron, she thought it was at four o'clock.
Okay. Is she gonna be able to get on?
She said she's, she said, oops, she's coming.
Okay. We'll wait just a little bit.
Okay.
All right, my apologies, my apologies, I'm here, I thought it was at four, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
Okay.
All right, I think we have everybody on, so let's get started, I'd like to start to uh welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners' work session, virtual session again, June ninth, twenty twenty, uh, three P M. Uh, I'd like to call this uh work session to order, but before we proceed, uh, I'd like to uh have Town Clerk Schuler read a message.
Yeah, so just wanted to go over a couple logistics, for those of you who are not very familiar with Zoom, uh, your main controls are on the left-hand side of your computer screen, these are your audio and video controls. Just make sure to mute yourself when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. Um, for board member participation today, uh, we'll have the mayor call on each board member individually, or John as well, to provide comments. Um, and basically, uh, just raise your hand if you have any questions, if we're in the middle of a presentation and we may not see you, just feel free to speak up. Uh, and then next, we just need to give a quick roll call. Um, I'll call on each one of you individually, if you'll just indicate if you're present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlich.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
All right, everyone's present, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Great, and also be mindful, those of you who have a virtual screen behind you, to, you're gonna raise your hand, get your hand out past the plane of your face, so it'll pick it up, cause I can't see it if it's back there, or just again, feel free to speak up. So with this, uh, today's business is a NIMS training for elected officials, we have a couple of guests today, uh, Fire Marshal Kevin Starnes and Union County Deputy Fire Marshal John Williams, so with that, we'll make it easy, uh, who wants to go first, John, I guess it's you, or is it Kevin?
I'll defer to Kevin, he's got a few logistics to cover.
Great, Kevin, we don't get to see you today, huh? We must be having technical difficulties, is that the way it used to go?
Okay.
There you go.
I, I, I hit the wrong button, um. Yeah, okay, uh, thank you, um, so, uh, again, this is, uh, John Williams, he's a, he's one of the deputy, uh, or he's the deputy fire marshal for, for Union County, and he is a very, very well knowledgeable, um, in the, uh, emergency management field, um, in fact, he's been in the Union, uh, County Emergency Operations Center, or have had, had a part of it since, uh, the whole coronavirus pandemic, so, um, he's, uh, taken time out of his day to, or, or his schedule to, to give us this training, which I think will, uh, will benefit greatly from, um, to give everybody an idea of what, uh, what NIMS is and the whole incident command system. So with the, some logistics with the training, uh, everyone that's in on the training, including the, uh, uh, town staff that's listening in, will have to fill out two different, actually three different things, uh, one of them is the registration form, I'll copy everybody's name down and I will email you the registration form, it's a fillable form, you can send it back to me electronically. The other form that I need to have filled out is the actual class roster, uh, unfortunately, it's not Zoom friendly, so it's gonna have to be manually filled out by everybody, uh, or, uh, signed by everybody that's in attendance, and that gets sent to the state, uh, so you can get actual credit for the class, so I will work with, uh, Melody on the commissioners, I may have to drive around and see everybody, uh, one day this week, but it has to be done before Friday, so, so we'll figure that out after today and after tonight, so, and then I think, uh, John's gonna talk about another, uh, the, another website you, you may have to log on to and, and, uh, create a profile, um, with the state to, to get actual state credit, so, uh, that's all I have, so I'll, uh, turn the, turn the floor over to, uh, John, and, uh, I appreciate it, John, and, uh, if you need anything, just let, let us know.
Okay, thanks, Kevin, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to do this, uh, this is a very unique, uh, way of presenting the class, but, uh, I think it will be, be good for everyone. So a couple of things that, um, we're going to talk about initially, as Kevin alluded to, there is a North Carolina terms website, uh, that you will, you'll fill out some information for, Kevin has that registration sheet, and then you will go online and create a profile, and any training that you take through North Carolina Emergency Management, you'll be able to, uh, download your certificate, uh, from that, and they'll also email you, uh, a certificate for the class. So with that, we'll, we'll go ahead and get started, and, um, as, as you all know, this is a, uh, National Incident Management System Overview, or senior, uh, senior officials, executives, elected, uh, and, and appointed. So the purpose of this is to give, uh, give you a, a snapshot version of how the incident command system works, and what you as elected and appointed officials, uh, what you can do inside the incident command system, and, and really as well, what you see, uh, town staff doing, be that, uh, the Police Department, and, uh, and even the, the Waxaw Fire Department. And you'll be able to utilize incident command in a, um, in a lot of different situations, both for, uh, incidents, uh, and, and planned events such as parades, things of that nature. So I will, uh, if you have any questions during this, just, uh, Mayor asks, raise your hand, uh, and we'll be certainly happy to discuss anything, if you have any questions that I'm unable to answer right now, I'll write those down, and be sure to follow up on those and get, uh, get the answers to those questions. Next one. Melody, is that you with the, are you doing the? The, uh, do you have the visuals?
No, what I T will do is, um, give you the controls.
Okay.
And you should be able to click on the screen once, and it will allow you to move forward.
Okay.
So working?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, uh, I'll look, I know some of you all, uh, some of y'all, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet, so if you could, uh, let's just go around, uh, state your name, uh, how long you have, uh, been with the town, uh, your, your position, and if you have had any, uh, experience, uh, utilizing, uh, the incident command system, be it during, uh, COVID or, or during something else. So Mayor, we'll start with you.
Had to kick off the button there, sorry about that, uh, Ron Pappas, I'm the mayor of Town Waxaw, and, uh, my office started, uh, the term started December tenth of twenty nineteen, and, uh, I have not, uh, with little exception, I have not been through, uh, one of these national incident training sessions, so that'd be helpful, so, um, guess I can, uh, have a little bit of experience with it, with the chief and his crew, uh, this last week, during the, uh, the rallies that were, uh, in our downtown area, so I got to see a little bit of that go to work, so, very impressive, by the way.
Thank you.
Now, can maybe go to Mayor Pro Tem?
Yep, Mayor Pro Tem.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Brenda McMillan, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, my term started November twenty seventeen, and I have not been through this training, um, at all, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll jump in there, uh, Commissioner Pedro Maury, I've been with the town since last year, a retired police officer, I've had, uh, NIMS, I believe it's one hundred, four hundred, and seven hundred, and I've used them during, uh, nine eleven, a couple of hurricanes, and about a month before retired for protest, uh, incident command with our mobile command center, uh, which was posted at all these events.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll go ahead, I'm Commissioner Tracy West, it's like I'm in my third year of my term, I took a class, uh, with the county my very first year, but really haven't done anything since then.
I'm Ann Simpson, I'm Commissioner, uh, my term started in December as well, twenty nineteen, uh, I don't really have any experience with the, um, incident command center, I am a registered nurse, so, uh, any background in terms of healthcare, uh, is what I have.
Thank you. Rest of the, uh, town staff.
Okay. Melody Schuler, go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, thank you, Melody, I'm, uh, Jeff Wells, town, uh, manager for the town of Waxaw, and I do have some previous, uh, NIMS experience, and also have participated in, uh, other organizations and, and the collaboration riding of their hazard mitigation plans.
And I'm Melody Schuler, I'm the town clerk for the town of Waxaw, uh, I have some experience with, uh, NIMS training, as well as, uh, some incident command training.
Um, I am Rosemary Bernauer, I'm the new finance director, um, and I don't have any of this emergency management training.
This is Wendy Davenport, I'm the H R director for the town of Waxaw, um, I have taken quite a few online, um, certifications or whatever, took the two, the two-day class recently that was held here in Waxaw, so I do have some of background in it, and I'm just hoping to, uh, just continue that, so I can say, so I can understand what is, uh, going on and be, be able to participate and give something back to it.
Very good.
Who's next? You can go ahead and go, Deana.
Okay, I'm Deana Sabinski, Park and Rec Director, uh, we just got through doing the three hundred and four hundred class that you, John, um, was graciously to be our instructor, thank you, um, and want to continue that education on emergency training.
Then we've got Matt Huber and Madison Miller.
Okay, um, Matt Huber, the Town Engineer Development Service Director, uh, as well took the previous three hundred and four hundred one-site classes, and those were one of my first ones, um, I'm really just shadowing this to see what, what, uh, the expectations for, uh, local officials may be different, so I'm aware, and, uh, this is a great opportunity, thank you.
And, uh, I'm Madison Miller, the senior planner for the town, um, so I took the intermediate and advanced, uh, incident command classes with, with you a couple months ago, um, and in my tenure, my master's program, uh, me and a couple of the students helped write the Town of Davidson Hazard Risk Analysis, um, so I've been always very interested in the subject, so always here to, to continue that education.
Thank you.
And then we have Kevin Starnes, Matt Falconberry, and Nick Bonwig.
I'll go, uh, again, my name's Kevin Starnes, I'm the fire marshal and, uh, also emergency management coordinator for the town, and I have a bit of, uh, incident command experience, uh, through the years, not really much being, uh, the coordinator, but I'm learning, learning as we go, and, and learning all the time with, uh, different classes, and, uh, so I just look forward to, to sitting through this class and having one more, one more bit of information, I guess, under my belt.
This is Matt Falconberry, um, Systems Administrator for the town of Waxaw, uh, I've had some NIMS training, the online version, and I've also, uh, set it a couple of roundtables that, uh, Don Moye has put on.
Nick Bonwig, I T Director for the town, uh, I was also, uh, privileged to be in one of the other, um, classes, uh, January, February, uh, that you had hosted, um, and looking, uh, forward to, uh, this class and furthering my information, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that covers everybody.
Okay, thank you, Melody.
You're welcome.
So again, my name's John Williams, I'm the deputy fire marshal for Union County, I have been working for Union County for eighteen years, uh, I am also a member of the North Carolina State, uh, Incident Management Team, I've been deployed, uh, several times in-state, uh, for hurricanes, and, uh, also, uh, been a part of some, uh, line of duty deaths, uh, doing things for, uh, the line of duty death funeral, and, uh, most recently, last, uh, September, I was deployed to Hyde County for Hurricane Dorian, so that, uh, that's, that was a unique experience, uh, and a lot of, uh, obviously been, it, been in the fire marshal's office, a lot of fire investigations, a lot of incident command on the, on the fireside, and also with, with dealing with emergency management, have been involved in, uh, different storms that we've had here, be it, uh, hurricanes, flooding, tornadoes, uh, train derailments, and the, uh, and hydro ammonia leak at, uh, Philbrook Pride several years ago. train derailments, and the Anheuser-Sammonia leak at Gilbert Pride several years ago. So what we're going to cover today is the, a overall explanation of the National Incident Management System that you will here commonly refer to as NIMS. And if you continue to take FEMA training, FEMA and the fire service as a, as a whole is notorious for acronyms. So you'll see a lot of different, a lot of different acronyms there. And, and it becomes somewhat confusing to get used to. However, we will talk about different command and coordination entities. ICS stands for the Incident Command System. EOC stands for Emergency Operations Center. MAC group is the multi-agency coordination group. And the GS is the Joint Information System within, within NIMS. So this course is broken into a total of six units. Unit two will go over the National Incident Management System. In unit three, we'll discuss the management characteristics, the organizational structure of the incident command system, and role of the command and general staff. And unit four will discuss the role of the Emergency Operations Center. And unit five will discuss how the MAC group, EOCs, and Joint Information System, and incident command, how they all interconnect and work with each other. And then the last unit will look at the senior officials' role in preparing this. All right, some of the, some of the course materials that you should have in the, in the manual, you'll, you'll have the, you'll have the slides, obviously. There are some handouts in there and resources for senior, senior officials, and also a sample delegation of authority letter. And we'll, we'll cover that delegation of authority letter. Nick, if we can go to the second unit now? Thank you. Okay, so in this unit, we're going to discuss what the National Incident Management System is. We'll describe it and then summarize the command and coordination components of the system. So first, we need to understand what a incident is. So the, the FEMA definition for the incident is an occurrence caused by either human or natural phenomenon that requires response actions to prevent or minimize loss of life or damage to property or the environment. So typically, on a day-in, day-out basis, in, in the, in the emergency services world, we respond to incidents routinely, be it a house fire, it could be a motor vehicle crash, could be a flooding incident. So there, you know, a number of, number of things there. Does, you know, and NIMS is, and incident command is weighted strongly towards public safety, emergency response agencies. However, that doesn't mean that it can't be applied to, to everyone else. So does the, you know, the town, day in and day out, has a lot of different operations that goes on? And, and different departments within the town may respond to different incidents in their respective areas on a daily basis. So the legal basis for NIMS, there's a couple of different, couple of different things that, that, well, one, one real big event that precipitated the NIMS requirements. And what, what big event do you think that was that precipitated the National Incident Management System?
9/11?
That is correct, 9/11. That, you know, a lot of things were realized out of that. And as a result of that, you had Homeland Security Presidential Directive 5, which deals with the management of domestic incidents. That was signed into, into law on February 28th, 2003. And you also have Presidential Policy Directive 8 that was signed on March 30th, and 2011. And it deals with national initiatives that develop a common approach to preparedness and response. And prior to 9/11, you know, a lot of, lot of entities, both public safety and non-public safety, they prepared for various incidents, various events. But sometimes there wasn't exactly a cohesive working relationship. And, you know, there's some different versions of the incident command system out there prior to, prior to the establishment of NIMS. So west coast may have done it different than the east coast and vice versa. So all these, Homeland Security Directive 5, Presidential Policy Directive 8, it formed a, a national approach to it in which every one has to, has to operate within the National Incident Management System. How do you think they tied everybody to operating within the National Incident Management System? How do you think they're required that?
Funding.
Correct, funding. And all of your police departments, fire departments, that is directly tied to funding. The chiefs of their, of those respective agencies, with the majority of grants out there through state and federal, have to sign a declaration stating that their department or their agency is NIMS compliant. Also, years ago, when this, when NIMS first came out, the county adopted NIMS as, as the, the operating system to use in, in incidents. And all of the municipalities signed off as well. So, but that's been, as I said, quite, quite a number of years ago. So some of the additional training that you may take is the, is called, this is the National Response Framework, which is IS 800 on the FEMA independent study courses. But the National Response Framework emphasizes partnership. And for those that have been, been on the conference, the partner conference call, and some that have attended some, some of the classes that I've taught, you know, you, you'll always hear that everything starts and ends locally. So yes, we do have that, that local response first. And then, you know, state and federal government will provide support as, as needed. But it is very important to remember that every, every person, every individual must also be somewhat prepared for disasters that, that may strike. Be it, be it a flood, a hurricane, you know, that's why we emphasize the 72-hour etiquettes for individuals to be prepared. Also, you get a lot of support during disasters from the private sector and, and non-governmental organizations. Some of the non-governmental organizations that may support in a disaster are like the Baptist men for mass feeding, Samaritan's Purse, or damage assessments and, as well as assistance with cleaning up damage. Those are just a few of the organizations that are out there that, that will provide support. On the, on the private sector side, you get like companies like Anheuser-Busch that will stop production of beer for, for a while in some of their facilities. They'll produce, they'll produce canned water and send that out to, to communities in need. Also, you'll see Walmart, Coca-Cola, companies like that step up and, and assist as needed. But again, I emphasize that everything starts and ends local. So, you know, you may get some pressure depending on what kind of situation that we're dealing with. You may get some pressure from elected leaders on the, on the state side and, and possibly the federal side as far as, you know, things, things to do. But you've got to remember that you're making the best decision that you can based on the information that you have. And it's nothing against the other elected officials, but when this is all over with, you know, who, who has to live with that decision day in and day out? It, it's us locally, so that's something to, to think about. So what the NIMS does is it provides a consistent template nationwide, so you can go anywhere in the United States and operate within the incident management system. I was deployed to Hawaii in 2018 for the volcano eruptions with a group of emergency management personnel. And the same, the same card that I use here to deploy in the state, I use there. And it pulled up my credentials, just like, just like I was back home here. It also enables federal, state, territorial, tribal, and local governments, along with private sector and non-governmental organizations to work together. You know, there have been a lot of versions of the basic NIMS class for different areas of the population. There's one for healthcare, there's one for public works. But it, and it may tailor, it tailors a little bit to them, but the basic concepts are all the same, no matter what you're dealing with. Also provides on, information on how to prepare, prevent, respond, recover, and mitigate the effects of the incidents regardless of the type, size, locational complexity of the incident or event. And then the National Incident Management System through, through several different things helps to reduce the loss of life, property, and harm to the environment. And, and those last, those last three there, as far as developing your incident objectives for an incident, if you focus on objectives to reduce loss of life, reduce damage to property and harm to the environment, the, those are your, there's always going to be your key objectives in anything that you're, that you're doing. So NIMS does provide a nationwide systematic approach to incident management through command and coordination of incidents, also resource management and information management. In, in today's society, is public information very critical? And it, it is getting the, the correct information out to the public extremely critical. So one of the, one of the things that, you know, there is a, there is a public information officer and the command staff, and we'll talk about that very shortly. What, also, NIMS does provide concepts and principles for all hazards. Initially, NIMS, years ago, it is based out of wildland fires in California. That's how it started in the early 70s. Now, the National Incident Management System is for, is for all hazards. You can use it for fires, floods, tornadoes, hurricanes, man-made events, everything. It's also a scalable and flexible. There are a number of different positions in the incident command structure. However, that doesn't mean that you have to utilize all those, all those positions. However, at the end of the day, the incident commander is going to be that person that if they did not stand up that particular position, then he or she is ultimately going to be responsible for that position. But, and we'll, we'll cover this a little bit later, but you also have to manage what's called a span of control. How many votes can you effectively manage as, as a single supervisor? Also, it does provide for standard resource management procedures that enable coordination among different jurisdictions and agencies, and gives you basic principles for communications and information management. So what, what NIMS does not do is, it is more than just the incident command system. It, it does not just apply to emergency response personnel. It really applies to, to everyone. And it's not, it's not a static system, it's very dynamic system. As the incident or event increases in size or decreases in size, then you'll see that organizational structure increase or decrease according. It's not a response plan either. Now, you can create response plans based off of the, the NIMS and incident command system, but NIMS is not just a generic response. It's not used only during large-scale incidents. And from the, I think a good analogy from the town perspective is you use incident command on a daily basis with the, with the form of government you have. So, you know, everybody, everybody reports to, to someone in the organization. So, you know, that's a good way to think about how the incident command system works on a, on a daily basis for the town. It's not a resource ordering system either. It will help you with resource ordering, but it's not going to do it for you. And it is not a communications plan. You've got to gather everyone, and you've got to know who your partners are in order for a communication plan to be established. You've got to gather everyone and you've got to know who your partners are in order for communication and to be established. So we'll throw, throw this question out. So the definition of command is the act of directing or controlling by virtue of explicit authority, regulatory, or delegated authority. So who has explicit authority for the management of all incident operations? What, what position, and we haven't gone through the positions yet, but who, who retains that authority?
Would be the, would it be the mayor or the fire marshal?
Well, let's, that's, that's a good, that's a good point. Let's don't think about it in the sense of, of their operational title. And, and maybe this is a unfair question because we hadn't went over the, we hadn't went over the command and general staff positions yet, but the, the person that would have authority for all of the incident operations would be the person called the incident commander. Now, it may very well be the mayor, it may be the fire marshal. I have, I have worked incidents on both sides of the spectrum to where the, as a matter of fact, the volcano eruption in Hawaii, in Hawaii County, the mayor was the incident commander. The mayor was previously the civil defense coordinator. And, and he, and he, he was the incident commander for this event. So it could, yes, it, it potentially could be the mayor or, or it could be another, could be another appointed official.
Well, it's just some of the wording here where it says explicit statutory, regulatory, delegated authority. That almost sounds like it would be like an official type of role as opposed to someone who's managing the actual incident per se.
Well.
And it would be acted by the leadership or the governing body to be in control of the incident, I guess. Especially if you're looking at the hierarchy of it.
Yeah, and, and I see, I see what you're, what you're, what you're saying there, the.
Like the president would direct like the National Guard and, and those people to handle the incident on the ground, but the ultimate, I guess, order would come from the top down in a way.
And, and that's, and that's correct. You know, the, the mayor and, mayor and council really act as a policy and steering committee for, for lack, in, in NIMS terminology. They act as that for the, the incident commander, whoever that incident commander may be. And, and I guess for the statute, statutory and delegated authority, you know, let's say for, for the town of Waxall, Chief Ice is, is obviously your police chief. So you have entrusted Chief Ice to run the Waxall Police Department in, in accordance with, with the policy, with town policies. But, so Chief Ice has that, you know, whether I, maybe the town has an ordinance, but he's got that authority to, to act on behalf of the town and to control incidents in his jurisdiction as according to town policy and so forth. But yeah, I, I do see, I do see your point, yes. So, multi-agency coordination. You've got to have multi-agency coordination to allow everybody to work really more efficiently and effectively together. During an incident should not be the first time that you have interaction with your different partners, be it on the town level or the county level. But, you know, you should be, you should be keenly aware of different partners that may, may be involved in incidents. Because having that relationship established prior to the incident, I can promise you it's going to go a whole lot smoother than if this is the first time that you've met this person. You have no level of comfort with him at all. So try to establish a rapport with some of these folks prior to the, the incident happening. So the multi-agency coordination group as well acts as a policy-level body. I'm sure that you all have, have been, I know you've been briefed a lot on the COVID response and, and recovery, so to speak, that, that we're in at this point, but you know, it, or I'm sure there were maybe some policies that the town had to enact, obviously with the state of emergency, such things of that nature. So, you know, be, be aware that there may be things that as elected officials, things like the state of emergency that, that may have to be done and other policies probably have had to be amended, especially during, during COVID as we, we're in the reopening phase. Also, the multi-agency coordination group can provide support to resource prioritization and, and allocation. There may be contracts that the town of Waxall has that may be beneficial to Union County or there may be contracts that Union County has that may be beneficial to the town of Waxall. And, you know, and, and other municipalities as well. So it's really knowing who has, you know, who has resources or who has the contracts for, for some of the resources and what resources do you have as a, as a municipality? You've got public works and, and things of that nature. And several years ago, North Carolina Emergency Management went through a resource identification process and all of the resources in each county were tied to that point. Now, it is, and that has been left up to the local emergency management coordinator to keep up with that since then. So every year, we go through a, a different section of that list and we update that. And it goes from fire apparatus to public works vehicles to law enforcement vehicles, ambulances, backhoes, a myriad of different things. So that continues to be updated. Making cooperative, multi-agency decisions. There's nothing wrong with not agreeing on, on some points, but, you know, especially during these long drawn-out events such as a hurricane, something like that, you know, there's got to be, there's got to be a decision made and the longer it takes to have that decision made, I mean, that could be, that could be lives that are in jeopardy could be, could be a number of different things there. And enable decision-making among elected appointed officials with those managing the incident. You know, it, it's vitally important and I, I know that Chief Ice does a, does a great job and I feel like Chief Sharp does as well, but on these, on these larger incidents, you know, they, their task with keeping you all informed of, of what's happening as well. So, and, you know, there may be some things that aren't going great on an incident that, that you all can assist with. So that, that's very important to, to keep everybody in the loop of, of what's going on. So emergency operations centers. There has been a myriad of different styles of emergency operations centers. Currently, the county's emergency operations center is located in the government center on the third floor. We do have a backup emergency operations center, which is at Wingate University in the Levine Health Sciences Building. And we, we can utilize several other facilities around the county for backup emergency operations centers as well. There, there can be some virtual emergency operations centers and, and you saw that a lot with COVID nineteen. EOCs that, that are both physical and virtual. So that is, that has become the new, new norm, so to speak. This is where, this is where folks gather to provide support for, for the incident. You'll also see an emergency operations centers that it can be broken up into a couple different categories. It may be by, by like command or general staff positions such as incident command, planning, logistics, finance, administration. Or it could be broken up into what's called an emergency support function. There are, there are fifteen of those and some of the emergency support functions may be fire, maybe health, which includes, you know, health department EMS, could be law enforcement, could be infrastructure, power, roads, things of that nature. Currently, our EOC is broken up into the, into the ICS structure. So we may have folks from a lot of different entities serving in the operations section. Maybe folks from fire, EMS, law, health. And currently, obviously with COVID, the public health director is serving as our operations section chief. So the Joint Information System. That is a system that's ran by the Public Information Officer. And to, to my knowledge, this is the, the first time in the, in the history of the county that during a response to something that we actually did do a joint information system with, with all the municipalities and several other private partners as well. But the Joint Information System focuses on coordinating interagency messaging. And it is extremely crucial that all of the messages that go out are, are the same. Because if not, then that does, that does several things. It decreases your credibility and then also, you know, it, it gives the, gives the appearance that nobody knows what's going on. So having, having that same consistent message is, is extremely important. It'll also allow you to develop public information plans and strategies across all different spectrums. Advise the incident commander and the EOC director or manager on public affairs issues, controls, rumors, and inaccurate information as well. So the incident command system is, is the standardized approach to on-scene command, control, and coordination of that respective incident. It does provide a, a good framework where personnel from different organizations can, can work together for, for a common goal. And it also provides a structure for integrative and coordinated procedures, personnel, equipment, facilities, and, and communication. You know, we now have with the eight hundred radios, eight hundred megahertz radio system, we now have interoperable communications with, you know, with all emergency services and several public works is, is on the eight hundred radio system now. And regionally, that is, that's been a very, a very good system for us. So where, this is just a slide that shows how NIMS command and coordination, how it all interconnects. So you'll have the incident command or a unified command. So unified command may be, let's say it's a, let's say it is a tornado comes through. So your unified command may be representative for fire, law enforcement, EMS, and probably somebody from like building code as well because due to, due to structure damage. So you may see that unified command expand and get bigger or it may contract as, as things go down. One of the positions in the command staff is the liaison officer. That liaison officer gets everybody's, every agency's information that is assisting with that, with that incident or event. And they put, you know, they get their information and then they can coordinate back and forth with that agency on various things as, as incident command or unified command may need. Then off, off-scene coordination and support for incident response may be your multi-agency coordination groups, your jurisdictional EOCs. There may be something that happens to where the town of Waxall stands up their EOC and maybe there's not a, not a need for the county to stand up an EOC. There, there could be several incidents like that. You also have dispatch centers. So our emergency communication center is really the, the first place that on the public safety side that we're going to go to, to try to get additional resources, especially fire, EMS, police. Then you may have department operations centers. This could be, for example, the sheriff's office is establishing a department operations center at the Wesley Chapel Fire Department or was going to if for, for the Republican National Convention as well as the EOC was going to be open as well. Then you may have a joint information system. That may be, you, that a lot of times may not be in one location. You may have the public information officers from their respective jurisdictions working from their offices or they may be virtual working from home and, but coordinating with everyone. So a overview of the senior official's role in this. So the senior official is responsible for ensuring safety of citizens and protection of property. Ensuring continuity of government, obviously particularly with, with COVID, since we're, we're still in it, you know, government, everything still has to continue. So there has been some challenges in, in trying to do that, but I think everyone's done a fantastic job in doing so. Activating specific legal authorities, be that disaster declarations, evacuation, states of emergency, or other protective measures such as, let's say, possibly a curfew. Delegating authority for incident command to a incident commander or, or unified command. So that's something just for, just for knowledge that, let's say, the town of Waxall had some event that was, went out of the scope that, that the town of Waxall could handle. And you call. And you called a incident management team in to, to run the incident for. That incident management team has got to have a delegation of authority from the town that authorizes them to, to run the incident. If not, they have no authority to run the incident. And some things in that delegation of authority would be, you know, really what, what are they authorized to do? If there are, as far as from a financial standpoint, who do they have to go through to get, to get certain things? And what's the, what's this cost, cost limit on thing? But you, you are going to have to have a, a delegation of authority if you want a, a incident management team to take over the incident. If you, if you don't and you just want assistance, then you can request a, a incident management team to come in and then they can, they can certainly assist in anything that you'd like them to assist in. Also coordinating for, or with a PO to keep the media and the public informed. So this is going to be a double edged sword here. It's going to be the senior official's role as well as that, that incident commander. So they'll, they'll work in conjunction. Requesting assistance from state agencies through the Emergency Operations Center. So any, any request that, that is made or is needed goes through the County EOC to, to the state through a, through a program called Web EOC. So we have, whether it's water that we request or any type of personal protective equipment, all that has to be funneled through the Emergency Operations Center. Resolving any resource allocation conflicts, coordinating with other senior officials and community partners. Because obviously there are, we serve a very diverse community now. There are a lot of different community needs out there, as well as participating in a multi-agency coordination group. All right, are there any questions for that unit? I know that was a long unit, but does anybody have any questions? So in this unit, we're going to go over the organizational structure of the incident command system and the roles of the command and general staff. So as we, we talked earlier, ICS is going to be a standardized approach to all hazards, incident management. You can use it with, with, with incidents that come up as well as planned events. Also, it allows the users to, to, to go into the organizational structure to match it with the complexities and demands of, of one incident or multiple incidents without being hindered by any jurisdictional boundaries that exist. Some of the big purposes behind ICS, obviously the safety of responders and others. It doesn't happen as much as it used to, but in the, especially in the, the fire world, early on, you know, there used to be a lot of just jumping calls. You know, if Waxall had a structural fire and I was listening to it on the radio and maybe my department went dispatch, then maybe I just want to go down there and show up. That is a huge liability issue. So, you know, there is a, a check in and checkout procedure with, with the incident command system. And there's a lot of different ways that you can, you can utilize that with. You can do it with paper forms, or you can do it electronically with a, basically a key card, which is what we utilize here, that scan, you can scan in and then scan out of the incident. But it's important to, to know who's there and, and what their operational task is. Also, ICS helps to ensure the achievement of tactical objectives. You know, we, we have, we have incident objectives for, for all these incidents that we, we use ICS on. There's a lot of incidents that we may not create a written incident action plan for. But if we don't, you know, we do have objectives in mind. Sometimes the objectives are not, are not effective. They're not, they're not very efficient force to utilize. So we may have to revamp those objectives. And, you know, put them down on paper will allow you, and post them will allow you to see them. And if they're not, if they're not effective, then do that, do that reevaluation piece of it and, and create objectives that you can readily, readily achieve. It also does allow, or hopefully allows the efficient use of resources. Again, going back to, to contracts and, and just individual resources that you may have. Surrounding municipalities and entities may not have some of those resources. Important that everyone knows what, what everyone else has. We've talked about some of these as far as examples of using the incident command system, fires, natural disasters, human and animal disease outbreaks, search and rescue missions, hazardous material incidents, criminal acts, terrorist incidents, national significant events such as presidential visits, Super Bowl, as well as other planned events, parades, demonstrations, could be graduation exercises, Fourth of July celebrations. Some of the benefits of utilizing ICS. Again, you can, you can utilize all of the positions if you, if you wish, or you can scale them down and, and utilize just a handful of positions. You know, you're typically, you're gonna, you're gonna always have a couple incident command positions that are, that are filled. Definitely, you're always going to have the incident commander. And more than likely, you're also going to have that operations section. Allows personnel from different agencies to, to go into a common management structure. So in the operations side of the incident command system, you may have, you may have a crew going around barricading roads that are flooded. Well, they would, you know, whether that, if that's done by public works, then, you know, they may have, they're going to have staff out and doing that, but they're going to report to somebody. So that, that would be their group, that would be their work division or work group supervisor. Also provides logistical and administrative report or support to operational staff. You think, you don't really think about the administrative piece of, of the incident command system until really later on in the event sometimes. And that can be a downfall, particularly with overtime restraints, as well as maybe you're only allowed to work a certain amount of time before having rest, things, things of that nature. And then you want to make sure that everybody has the equipment that's needed to perform the tasks that they're asked to do. Also, ICS is somewhat, is cost effective by avoiding a duplication of, of efforts. That's why in the resource ordering process, you've got several different, different sections that sign off all those resource orders prior to, prior to them being made. So you want, you have involvement there, a lot of different pieces of the incident command puzzle. So the organization of the incident command system, it may differ from the day to day titles and positions that, that, that you hold. There are, there's different terminology for the position titles and it can create, you know, hopefully that will avoid confusion during response. A, a rank may change during deployment. A chief may not hold that title when they are deployed under the ICS structure. Or they, or they, they may retain it, just depending on, on what the nature of the situation is. So this is the, this is, this is a part of the ICS structure. This is the, obviously the incident commander. And then this is, this is what's called the general staff section. So you, you'll have an operations section, which is obviously whatever operations that you are conducting, be that building assessments after, after a flood or after a tornado. Then you have a, you have a planning section that is focused on creating the, that next incident action plan for whatever, however long that operational period is, as well as maintaining situational awareness and doing, doing planning for the future past the, past that incident action plan that you're in. You also have the logistics section to make sure that everybody in the operations section has the equipment needed to do his or her job. And they also maintain facilities and needs for the incident as a whole, particularly if it's a, if it's a long duration incident, you have outside resources come in. Where are you going to house these resources? How are you going to feed them? Things of that nature and providing, providing medical aid to the responders. If, if we were providing medical aid to citizens, then it would be under the operations section. In finance and admin, again, a lot of times those positions aren't initially established. But when you get into these long duration incidents and, or really like we're in with, with COVID now, you know, somebody's initially, when we were first in the state of emergency, it was, it was extremely difficult to get some items. So I know here, they waived some of the, some of the purchasing policies that we had to go through. But, but now that things are, are somewhat stabilized, then we, you know, we've gone back to basically traditional purchasing policies to, for the most part. This is also, you'll, you'll hear that the incident commander is the last person to leave the incident. And that's 100% correct. However, after the incident command, after the incident commander leaves, finance and admin is really going to be the last section that's going to be stood up for, for the event. Because the recovery process may be very in-depth. We, you know, we've still got municipalities across the state that are dealing with recovery from Hurricane Matthew back in 2016. So it, it, it may be, it, it may be a long term, long term recovery, particularly if you've got federal and state dollars involved, yes ma'am.
The question I have is that you said the incident commander stays until the end. What about if it's like over multiple days or weeks, like we're going through COVID? How does that work?
Sure.
Same person through that time span, or they rotate for like a 24 hour type thing?
Well, it depends on the, it depends on the operational period. You know, here, here in the EOC for, for COVID, now we're running a, a daytime operational period, eight to five. So primarily, we have had basically the same person almost every day. There, there's been, there's been three of us that have switched incident, incident command positions during this. So it, it may be the same person. However, let's say we were running a 24 hour operational period for, for the EOC. Then no, you, you would have different people. You would do 12 hour shifts and you'd really need, you really need four to, you really need about four people qualified to be the incident commander to be able to do that. Because you will run the 12 hour shifts and it, it will wear you down very quickly. But it, it's, it won't be, it won't be the same person. And for example, during, during Hurricane Florence here, I was the, I was the night shift incident commander. And I, and I was, I was the incident commander for seven days that, that we were open. And then we had a, we had a day, day incident commander and that was the same person. But again, it, it depends a lot on the, on the event type and, and really, you know, what, what happens. Because, you know, we've had some events here that, you know, somebody's gotten sick and then somebody else has had to step in. So a lot of that is, is dependent. But, but you do have to make sure whatever position that you're serving in, you, you need to get some, you need to get some breaks involved in it. Because the longer the incident goes, it, it's very easy to get tunnel bit. So some of the characteristics that NIMs offers is common terminology. So, so I know that some of you have been around fire and, and EMS and law for, for some time. And we are horrible about using what's called 10 codes. And 10 codes used to be the, everybody used those. And we, we got away from that because a, for example, here, a 1040 used to mean a fight. Well, in Mecklenburg County, at one point, it meant a bomb threat. And so you'd go to different jurisdictions and these 10 codes meant a lot of different things. So that's why we went to common terminology, plain, plain English. And, and it's hard to, to battle some of those 10 codes, specifically 10-4, because everybody, everybody knows that. So it, it's, it's hard to break that. But for the most part, you saw, you saw plain English. Also, management by objectives. You know, these, the creation of the objectives, you'll, you'll hear the word that you need to create smart object, which are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and have some type of time completion on those object. I have, I've been on a lot of different instances before where what we're, what we're doing just is just isn't working, and we've got to reevaluate those objectives. Also, it provides a manageable span of control. So many times we, we go and, and we see that, you know, there's a lot of people doing a lot of different things, but you know, 20 people may report to one person. One person can't effectively manage that many people. The optimal span of control in, in incident command is five to seven. Resource management. Establish, establishment of command and transfer of command. So let's say that I'm, let's say that you're driving down the road and you come upon a traffic accident. You're, you're the first person there. Whether, whether you really think about it or not, who is the incident commander at that point? You're, you're the incident commander. Now, when we talk about transfer of command, so, so let's say you're the, let's say you're the first person there. And then let's say Kevin Starnes pulls up. Well, then you, you could, you would basically transfer command to him because he has a, he has a higher knowledge of that, of that particular event. So transfer command can be done like that. And also, going back to your question about the same incident commander, that can also be done in your operational, in your instant action plan as far as a time to transfer command. So if we're in a 24-hour operational period, then I may transfer command to the oncoming incident commander, to the new incident commander at 1900 hours tonight. And it is also important that everyone knows when you transfer command. It's, it's easy to do on, on the radio side, on, on the fire ground or police or EMS radios. That's very easy to do. But on these long duration incidents, you'll see it in the, in the incident action plan that, and the work assignments that are passed out to you. Also, you've got to, NMS does create the chain of command and, and unity of command. So if I'm, if I'm putting out barricades on the roads for flooded roads and my supervisor is the public works director, then is there any need for me to be calling the mayor and, and asking the mayor questions when I was given specific work instruction? No. You know, there, there, there's not. If you, you've been given specific instructions and you want to, you want to follow that chain of command. And, and in following the chain of command, yes, it does work from the bottom up, but it, that, the flow of information has got to be both from the bottom up and the top down because, you know, everyone out in the field, that, that's where you're getting your situational awareness of what's going on out there. However, if you're, you're inside working, you know, working in a different unit or, or facet of the operation, you may have information that needs to get, needs to get passed along to everybody. So it is important that, that that information, information flow goes both ways. You will also see dispatch and deployment. Obviously, on a daily basis, on, in the, in the public safety spectrum, we're dispatched to incidents every, every day for various things. Our deployment's a little bit different. When you're deployed, you will have what's called a mission number. And if you don't have that mission number, then you will not be eligible for state or federal reimbursement. So you, you've got to have that mission number for. NMS also allows modular organization. You can expand and contract as needed. It does create a framework for instant action planning. The instant action planning is done by the plans section and, and the various units in there, situation unit, resources unit leader, information intelligence unit leader. But the whole orchestration of the instant action plan is, was solely with the, with the planning section. A lot of different, a lot of different sections that are involved in. Incident facilities and locations. So you may have a incident command post that may be on the scene of an incident, but it could very easily be a remote command post. Maybe established in town hall, could be police department. Integrated communications. And, you know, we're very unique here in Union County since we border South Carolina. You know, there, there are a few communications challenges. And I think for the most part, we have, we've overcome those, but initially, it was not uncommon for emergency services to have several different radios in their vehicles in order to communicate with out-of-state agencies. It's, now that has almost completely gone away. Unified command. You know, on, on a lot of these incidents, be it, let's say, we've got, we've got a storm that's come through and we've got a lot of damage, we've got flooding. There are a lot of agencies that need to be maybe involved in that, in that command. It may not be such a EMS involvement, but it may be a huge fire, law, building code, public works issue. So agencies that have, or departments that have the most involvement in the incident, they need to be, they need to have a representative in the, in the unified command structure. And, and how that operates is, let's say, I'll say the public works director, let's say Kevin, Kevin's the fire chief and, and chief officer is the police chief. Well, if we're all in, in that unified command, whomever, whatever agency has the most going on or the most, most going on with the incident, then they are basically going to be the lead incident commander. As a public works director, if the only thing that I'm tasked with is, is barricading roads and maybe I don't have a tremendous amount of involvement. So I might be the spokesperson for command. So if, if Kevin and Chief Ice are, are having to do something else and there's a, there's a press conference that they want somebody from unified command to be there, I may be the spokesperson for, for the unified command. And again, that unified command group can expand and contract as, as needed based on the incident. And the lead, basically, the lead incident commander may also switch off depending on which department has more involvement. NMS also provides for accountability. You know, we are, we are accountable for our actions. So it, it provides for that as well as accountability of folks that are on scene or involved in the event. And provides for information and intelligence management. Particularly with the, with social media now, information is, is going to get out there really quick, be it the correct information or the, or not correct information. And as operating under the instant command system in NMS, you know, we collectively are responsible for distributing the correct information and, and trying to correct the misinformation that we may see. We talked about common terminology, not using the TEN codes, she's plain language, clear text. Talked about management by objectives.
John, do you mind to hold on just one second? Tracy has lost connection.
Sure.
She says that she can hear, so we can go ahead and continue.
Okay. So the instant action plan is, that's orchestrated by the planning section. So they do specify the instant objectives in that, but the instant objectives are set forth by the incident commander. States the activities that are to be completed. Covers a specified timeframe called an operational period. And that may be 12 hours, 24, could, could be longer. Can be a oral instant action plan or written, except for hazmat, it's got to be a written instant action plan. And really, anytime, if you're, if you're spanning more than one operational period, more than eight hours, you really, you really should do a written instant action plan. And also needs to take into account legal and policy considerations and direction. So the modular organization is a developed sort of top-down fashion based on the size and complexity of the incident and based also on the hazard environment created by the incident. You may just have a couple of work divided branches in the operations section, or you may have, you might have a lot depending, depending really on, on what you've got going on. Instant objectives will also determine the organizational size. Only the positions that you need field will require to be field. And each, each element must have somebody in charge. That, that may be, it may be the section chief, or it may be what's called a branch director. Span of control, the, the new revised guideline is, is one person supervising five people. But you can go up to seven and not, and not jeopardize that. Instant personnel use their best judgment to determine effective span of control. The more hazardous the operation is, then you probably need to, probably need to refine more deep on the span of control and have less people report. Comprehensive resource management. So these resources may include personnel, may include equipment, team, supplies, facilities. Personnel may have, again, going back to that work-rest ratio. And then if, particularly if you're getting personnel from other jurisdictions, you know, how long are they able to be along basically from that jurisdiction? Is it a five, seven-day deployment, or is it a shorter timeframe? Equipment. You know, equipment, resources in general cost money, particularly, particularly on the equipment side. If you, you've got equipment out there that you have, you have obtained for this incident and you're not using it, you know, it's still sitting there and somebody's still having to pay the bill for it. So make sure that if, you know, if equipment's not needed, that you go ahead and return it and, and, you know, get it, get it out of the way so you can, you can get other things that need. Different supplies. It, it may be radios, it may be printers. You know, running a emergency operations center or an, an incident command post for that matter, it can be very IT-intensive, but a lot of that goes into the facilities too. But you know, just, just regular supplies as well, phone chargers, things of that nature. Resource management processes for maintaining accurate and updated resource inventories. You know, you, you really got to keep track of that because you don't want to overorder. And at the same time, you don't want to underorder either. Establish, you know, calculate your burn rates of, of equipment that's being utilized so you can prepare for additional order. And, and to plan for that. Reimbursement for resources that are used. How is, how is that going to go? And if there is reimbursement, then how long is it going to be before you get reimbursed for these expenditures? And for, for smaller municipalities that don't necessarily have a huge budget, that can be a tremendous impact for them. You saw that during Hurricane Matthew, particularly in the eastern part of the state. You know, there are small municipalities that were, were not doing that great economically to begin with. And the hurricane came in and it, it basically wiped them out. They're still, they're still struggling today. So that, that reimbursement piece may take quite some time. Integrated communications. Again, a lot of this has been solved with, with us going on the 800 megahertz radio system with Charlotte. And in this, in this region, a lot of different counties are on that, on that radio system so we can communicate regionally. The state does have a Viper radio system. We have the Viper frequencies in, in our 800 radios. And you can, I could get on my radio today and talk to somebody in Asheville if, if we were on the same channel to, to each other. So the interoperable communication, we have come a long way on that in the last 10 years. However, it, it is great, but you, you still got to have, you still got to have a backup to that. So you know, knowing, knowing what that backup is and you know, really, when the, when the radio system goes down, you may have to go back to just phone communication. But as we saw in 9/11, what happened with, with cellular communications as well. So it, you know, there, there are a lot of different factors. We talked about establishing and, and transfer of command. Covered chain and unity of command. Okay, so the unified command, I would like, would like to point this out. Unified command would be established when no one jurisdiction has primary authority or resources to manage the incident on, on their own. And they manage the incident by jointly approved objective. Routinely, fire EMS police do a, do a single instant command on majority of instances that they go. Particularly house fires, break in, entering, things of that nature. When we go out of that where we, we need other agencies involved, that we need to do the unified. About the dispatch deployment and accountability. Again, this, this really is a safety issue because if, if folks go out to scenes and they're not, they're not asked to come out there, then it, it becomes a safety issue for, for them. And really the, the folks that are on scene as well. Some incident facilities and locations that we have discussed. The incident command post, again, that may be on scene, or it could be a remote instant command post, as well as the instant base. If you have resources that are coming in, out of, out of town, that you've got to establish housing for those folks. Staging areas or resources to be deployed to the incident. They have mass casualty triage areas, points of distribution. Those were, those were set up during the water, water situation several months ago, where water was distributed, as well as emergency shelters. Information, intelligence and management. There is, uh, instant management does establish a process for gathering, assessing, sharing and managing information and intelligence. So as far as who does what in the ICS structure, the incident commander does have the overall responsibility for the incident and they set the objectives for the incident. Operations section is tasked with developing the tactical organization and carries, and decides how they're going to carry out the objectives that were set forth by the incident commander. They need to make sure that they've got adequate resources to be able to do that. Planning section develops the instant action plan to accomplish the objectives set forth by the incident commander. Logistics provides resources, personnel and services needed to support the incident. And then finance monitors incident related costs and provides overall fiscal guidance for the incident command structure. So establishing instant command. Upon arriving at the incident, the higher ranking person will either assume command, maintain command, or transfer command to someone else. The most qualified person at the scene needs to be designated as the incident commander. And that's something that is, in the emergency services arena, sometimes that's hard to, for, for us to realize sometimes that maybe, you know, maybe as a, as a ranking officer of the organization, we may think, well, you know, maybe I should be in, in the incident commander. But, uh, you know, if there's somebody else that, that they may, they may or may not be a ranking officer in the organization. But if they're more qualified to be the incident commander, then that's the person that needs to be the incident commander. That doesn't mean that the chief or assistant chief or deputy chief can't have a role because they, they very much will have a role in this.
I have a question. I mean, you talked about the most qualified person at the scene. Wouldn't, wouldn't they put themselves in jeopardy? Like at one point, where would they kind of step back and manage it from afar? Cause you know, if, if you're at the scene, I mean, the potential for them to be, to be, I don't know, a victim or something at the scene, like say it was a fire or a bombing, wouldn't they want to protect themselves in a way?
Well, yes, they, they may, you know, a, a fire, a, a structured fire situation, more than you're going to have, you're going to have a, a instant commander that's going to be on scene. Now, there, there are several new versions of, of how you do that. Some, some instant command on the fireside is now talking about staying in your vehicle and, and maintaining command. You know, there's some, um, there's some safety considerations with that as well. Being, being in a vehicle, you only have one point of view. You know, when, when I was, uh, when I was a, a fire chief in the volunteer department, I, I like to, I did, I established a, a command post. Normally it, it was in the, it was in the front yard, however, I did make laps around several times to, so I could get, so I could get good viewpoint. On, on the flip side of that though, um, let's say, let's say it may be a bombing incident or something. Yes, you, you may have, you're going to, you're going to still have a instant commander there, but the, you know, I wasn't, I'm not speaking on behalf of Chief Ice, but Chief Ice, for example, he may not, he may not necessarily be there. He may be at, you know, Waxell may have an EOC open. He may be in the, in the EOC and, and another ranking person from the Waxell PD may be the on-scene incident commander. So the, the role of the incident commander is to provide overall leadership for response. Also, um, they receive policy direction from the, from the senior official. So whether that, that may be a, that may be the mayor, that may be the town manager or a combination thereof. So that, you know, there's that. Also, the IC will establish the instant objectives. They're going to assist with the development of the instant action plan by developing the instant objective. Also, it is, even though there, there is a safety officer, the incident commander, while they are creating the instant objectives, they, they need to be safety minded, keep, and keep that on the forefront of what's going on. Also, they've got to be able to delegate authority to others. The incident commander doesn't need to get involved tactically in, in things that are, that are going on. That's what the operations section chief is for, is to carry out, uh, you know, carry out those instant objectives. So the incident commander needs to have that 360 view of, of what's going on. Make sure that there's communication between the emergency operations center, if it's established, and the joint information center, if, if it's established. Also to provide information to internal and external stakeholders. And the larger the event that is, that may be done by the emergency operations center or the joint information center. Establishes and maintains the liaison with other agencies that may be participating in the incident. So the senior officials' role in incident command be to delegate authority for on-scene operations to the incident commander or, or unified command. And again, a lot of this is, is already, is already in place. Provide policy guidance on priorities and objectives. Activate specific legal authorities oversee resource coordination and support to the incident command through the EOC. So we discussed, uh, delegation of authority. It may be in writing, it may be, or, or it could be verbal. I would emphasize that it really does need to be in writing because i- if it's verbal, it goes, it just goes back to a he said, she said situation, which during, for day-to-day operations, may be okay, but if you're in, if you're in an incident or event that you span multiple days, they're, you know, they're going to want, if you've got other people coming in to assist you and particularly if you want them to take over the incident, they're going to want a written delegation of authority. And a, and a good example of this, when I was deployed for Hurricane Matthew to Cumberland County, we were deployed as, as an incident management team. We got, we got down there and, and Cumberland County did not want to give up command and control of the, of the incident, so they, they wouldn't give us a delegation of authority, which there was, there was no problem with that. We, uh, we've molded into what then was a EOC overhead team. And we just provide support in the EOC in the respective positions that they need. But Cumberland County maintained command and control of this. And that, and that's certainly each jurisdiction's option to, to do. If you do a delegation of authority though, again, there does need to be identified in their legal authorities restrictions, financial authorities and restrictions, reporting requirements. As if I'm coming in as the, if, as the incident commander, who do I report to? Is that, is that Mayor Pappas? Is that the town manager? Who, who is that? And, and how often do you want me to report to you to give, to give you updates on what's going on? Demographic issues. You know, is, is there a segment of the population that's having more difficulty than, than another segment? What's, uh, you know, what was going on prior to, uh, prior to the incident? Give, give a good snapshot of the community. Uh, political, political implications. We, I have been, uh, you know, in, involved in situations before that we've had elected leaders ask for a shelter in a, in a certain area when, when I've been deployed. And there, we really didn't have the staff to, to do it. But, uh, they, they asked for a shelter to be established in that area. And, you know, from, from my standpoint of, of being deployed, it would be easy for me to say, well, uh, I'm not doing that. But, because I'm not the one that has to, I'm not the one that has to live with that. Unfortunately, those, those people there do. So we did what we needed to do. We opened the shelter. And there were two people that came to the shelter and stayed for 24 hours. And we informed the, the council person that there's, that we opened it. There was, there were two people that showed up. And then we ended up subsequently closing it the next day. Yep, it was, um, it was a lot of work to open it, but we opened it. They, they were satisfied. There wasn't, there wasn't a need for it. We, we closed it. So, um, you do, you do get into those situations sometime. Agency and jurisdictional priorities. We need to know, if, if you're coming in and taking, oh, taking command of an incident, you need to know what the jurisdictional priorities are. Plan for, uh, public information management. Who, who is doing that? Is that, is that the, you know, is that the public information officer? Is there just one public information officer for the municipality? Or is it a combination of one for the municipality, one for fire, one for police? How does, how does all that work? And then who, uh, who signs off on what is being disseminated to, to the public? Process for communication, be it, uh, emergency communication to, uh, to whomever you're reporting to or communications in, in general. And then we need to know how we're going to be evaluated on the incident. If things are not going as, as you wish for them to go, then what, what's the process for evaluation and the things we need to tie it up on? So, well, I think we've covered the, the incident commander very well. Some other, uh, incident management roles, the EOC director and staff, they're going to support, uh, the incident commander and the multi-agency coordination group by providing resources, planning for requirements for those resources and facilitating that, the situational awareness. Because maintaining situational awareness is very critical, especially during the, the long-term events. The longer the incident goes on, the easier it is to lose situational awareness. And that's why the, the situation reports that, that come out, those are, you know, those are very, very important because that, that does give a snapshot to everybody of, of the things that are going on. Joint information system establishes communication between incident personnel as well as off-site personnel and provides critical information to the public. And then the senior officials and the multi-agency coordination group provide the incident commander and, and the EOC staff with authority, mission and strategic direction, and also policy. Some of the, uh, command staff, or well, not some of, all the command staff is directly under the incident commander. So that will be the public information officer, liaison officer and safety officer. For these positions, you may have, may have assistance to those. Then we covered the general staff, your operations, planning, logistics and finance and administration. There is a, could be a fifth general staff position. That would be the information and intelligence section. It could be, it could be a fifth general staff position, or it can also be under the planning section as a, as a unit of the planning section. So you've heard me refer to the, to an incident management team. You may also see that there, there are instant management teams. We have one locally and, and as well as statewide. So the instant management team, um, may be, it'll be comprised of the incident commander, your command and general staff, as well as your different unit leaders. So you may be deployed as a seven, eight-person instant management team, or it may be more. The most, most I have been deployed with was sixteen. It is important to note that if you request a instant management team from the state, that typically, uh, the lead time on that is going to be 24 to 36 hours. So I think, I think that's important to think about. And, and we're, we're fortunate here that, you know, the, the flooding events that we have are fairly, fairly short-lived. But when, when I was deployed to Cumberland County after, after Hurricane- But when I was deployed to Cumberland County after, after Hurricane Matthew, they had been, you know, they've been in their EOC, the Cumberland County folks, they've been in their EOC for, for, for basically 30 hours by the time we got down there, and they were absolutely spent. So I, I think it's important to think about your own plans in, in regards to this and identify additional folks within your respective departments that may be able to serve in, in some different functions of the ICS system, so you don't, you don't burn out one, one or two people, you know, working, working 24, 30 hours or more. That, that's very, that's very, very difficult. As far as your incident complexity and resource needs, obviously, as the complexity of the incident increases, then your resource needs increase. You take this single-vehicle accident here against a power pole, probably not a lot of resources are needed with that. That can be relatively easy. Take the incident here, which I believe was the Alfred Murrow bombing in Oklahoma City, tremendous amount of resources. So, you know, again, you may only have a few resource needs, and then as it, as it gets more complex, then your ICS, your organizational structure will drastically increase. So think about, you know, think about your, think about Waksaw and what factors may affect the complexity of an incident in, in Waksaw. What's a, what's something, what's a big factor that, that may affect the complexity of an incident in Waksaw?
Maybe the train tracks?
Bingo, bingo. You know, whether that, that may be your incident, or let's say there's a, let's say there's a, a train that stopped on the tracks for a long period of time, not being able to get, to get resources in. So that, that could be, that could be a very huge issue there. Instant timeframes, how long will a complex incident last? You know, that, that, that varies. It, it depends, really depends on, on what the incident is and, and the impacts that you've got. How long do we need to be self-sufficient? Again, you're, you're seeing that 72-hour self-sufficient resource, resource kit now. How will you know when the, when the incident is over? Have you accomplished all of your incident objectives? What, what's, what's left to be done? Again, that recovery piece can last a much longer than the incident. Yes?
John, could we get about a 10-minute break here, if you have time for that?
Absolutely, sure.
Great. If this is a good spot to break, just say-
Yes, that'll be fine.
Very good, thank you. So we'll run, we'll come back at 5:15, it's 5:05 our time now? John, I have a quick question before we get going.
Yeah.
Our Board of Commissioners meeting is at 6:30. I know you have a lot more slides to present, so I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that, if you, what are you thinking?
I think, I think we'll be, I think we'll be good. I think I can be, I think we can be done by six.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great. Just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. We need to have a little break in between, you know, between this meeting and the next one, so-
Sure.
If you think six is it, is everybody back in?
Yes.
I think Pedro's still out. So we'll wait, we'll give a couple minutes, since I said-
I'm here, I just added-
Okay.
Very good. Okay, I think that we're all back in, so John, please proceed.
Okay. So this is just a example here of a incident of a seven-year-old child that was reported missing in a coastal area. You've got the incident commander, then you have safety officer, public information liaison. Then under, under the incident commander, also you've got EMS group, search group, and investigation group. So in this, in this scenario, as the incident has expanded now, you see the operations section is established, and now there's a staging area. You've still got your EMS group, search, and investigation group. Then under the search group, you've got a K-9 strike team and search volunteers. So you're still, your, your Spada Control is still being, still being utilized here. Now, as we've gotten, as this search has gotten bigger, you've got a lot of hundreds of responders and volunteers that are on scene, providing support. Then now you've established the operations section, planning section, and logistics section. Again, we, we talked about Unified Command, and, you know, everybody, this is a, this is a place that everybody can play in the, in the same sandbox together. And Unified Command, it does, it really does work very effectively when, when you've got everybody doing things as, as they should. You'll see a common set of objectives, a single instant action plan. And what this does, let's say that fire's doing an instant action plan, and law's doing an instant action plan, and you've got another entity doing an instant action plan. There can be competing objectives, and then you're, as far as resources go, you may be competing for different resources. And that's the beauty of Unified Command, those common set of objectives and, and really the commonality of resources as well. You may also have what's called an area command, which manages multiple incidents over, over a certain area, or in the case where you have a large incident that has multiple incident management teams assigned to it. A good example of this, when, last year, when I got deployed to Hyde County, initially went to the Hyde County EOC and worked, and then after Hurricane Dorian came through, I ended up going over to Okeechobee Island, and we established an area command over there, still working under, under Hyde County, because there were a lot of different incidents going on, and there was a, obviously a big distance between mainland and, and the island. All right, if we can move to unit four. All right, so now we're going to talk about emergency operations centers. So this slide is a little bit, it's actually very busy, but if we, if we go to the bottom here, and you see you have the ICS and incident command, where you have incident command post, and then an area command may, may be established, or it may not be. But let's say you're going from a, from a incident command post, and then next you're going up to the local emergency operations center. Then traditionally, you would go from our local emergency operations center to the state operation center. There's also a business emergency operations center that is stood up through, through the state, that works, works, works with the state as well as works with the local EOC. Then you have state agency department operation centers. You may have one for, for the Department of Transportation, or the Office of State Fire Marshal for parks. Then if, if they can't, if the state can't get the resources that are needed within the state, then it does, it goes through FEMA, and it can also, it can go through FEMA, and it can go through what's called the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, which each state is a signator of that, and they can get state-to-state mutual aid, basically. On presidential declared disasters, you'll see FEMA come in and establish a joint field office with somebody from FEMA as the point person for, for that respective event. As far as regional response coordination centers, emergency, North Carolina emergency management is broken up into three different regions, western, central, and eastern. We are in the western branch, we're the last county in the western branch. So Anson County, to the east of us, they are, they're in the central branch. These, these branches will also stand up, our western branch offices in Hickory, during disasters, or even for the pandemic of COVID, the, the branch offices will stand up as regional coordination centers for their respective counties as well. Then going up to, to the federal side, the National Operations Center, and then the, you'll have the federal agency department operations centers for different departments. So it does, everything does work together, and FEMA, really as a result of Hurricane, or after Hurricane Katrina, they begin to pre-deploy assets to, to areas, particularly for if we were anticipating landfalling hurricanes, they'll go ahead and deploy swift water- they'll go ahead and deploy swift water team and things of that nature to different areas of different states depending on the, the risk. The EOC function is, is really to support the, the incident, and support the, for the incident commander, collect, analyze, and share, disseminate the information that is gathered. Also support resource needs and requests, including resource allocation and tracking those resources to where they go. Coordinating plans and determining current and future needs for the incident. And also to support incident command. And, and they may also provide policy direction and, and coordination respectively. We talked about the organizational structure of the EOC. A lot of times it's in the traditional ICS format, or it can be in a emergency support function format, such as fire, emergency management, help. And I would say statewide, it's probably 50/50 as to what the makeup of the various EOCs are. Some of the benefits of the, of establishing an EOC gives a common situational picture, should simplify verifying information that's coming out. It really helps for long-term operations. Because a lot of times, especially on, on scene incident commander, you know, they're, they're obviously focused on the incident at hand. So it may be difficult to think about long-term resource needs, things like that. The EOC can really help out those long-term resource needs, be it personnel or equipment. Provides ready access to available information and aids with resource identification and use of the resources. So how, how the EOC and the senior official mat group work together? Local delegations or statutes of authority may limit the EOC's functions or actions. For example, monetary spending thresholds. So that may be something that senior official may have to come in on. And I'm sure there's some authorities there during a, during a state of emergency where maybe some of the spend, some of the monetary threshold spending limits may be, may be waived or may be increased. Senior official may also authorize additional monetary resources, provide some operational guidance, oversee conflicts, incidents, and provide additional policy guidance. The, they also help guide the EOC by delegating the appropriate authority to the EOC director, issuing an initial policy statement to the EOC, and then going over that, determining how the EOC is to report to senior leadership and how often, how often do they want that to happen? Determine how the senior officials group or mat group is going to, is going to do the decision-making process, identifying any fiscal issues and parameters for the EOC, and then defining strategic level priorities for the incident. How is the EOC going to operate within the various phases of the incident? Is it going to expand? And when we need to start contracting the operations of the EOC? Okay, go to the unit five. So in this unit, we're going to talk about how the multi-agency coordination groups and the joint information centers. The multi-agency coordination group, which can all, can be the, can be the senior official group, can be the policy group, may hear it termed as, as those. It's going to provide policy guidance to the EOC. They're going to support resource prioritization and allocation. They may have specific information and intelligence on, on resources that, that the EOC may not have due to their established relationships within the respective community. Also gives decision-making among elected and appointed officials and, and senior executives. So the mat group is going to be comprised of elected officials, senior decision-makers in, in the, can be in the community as a whole, and can be obviously department-based as well, senior public safety officials, high-level and, and subject matter experts. Another good component of this that probably would need to be added would be the legal component. Because you definitely want to make sure that you're not, you're not, you're operating effectively within legal parameters. We talked a lot about, about the senior official role and mat group role, define mission and strategic direction, identify on operational priorities, provide policy guidance, resolve scarce resource allocation issues. And, and we've had that, we've had that some years, you know. Particularly, the face coverings were hard to come by initially for, for COVID. You know, and we, we did find, we did find a vendor to, to do those. And, you know, my, my delegation from, from our mat group was, you know, go ahead, if you find what you think is a reasonable price, go ahead and, go ahead and purchase them. So it went, you know, it went well above what our traditional spending threshold would be, but it was authorized by, by the mat group. Delegate command authority to the incident commander, unified command, and delegate appropriate authority to the EOC. Determine the decision-making process of the, of the EOC and the mat group. Who needs to be included in, in the, in the mat group? We have, for the county, the mat group is comprised of county administration, the county manager's office, legal, our, our finance department, as, as well as procurement, and, and then also representative from the Board of Commissioners is, is in the mat group. And, and also HR. Issue an initial policy statement to guide the EOC and determine those reporting requirements. Operational priorities. Again, as far as establishing your objectives for, for the incident, you're always going to see the save lives, protect property and environment, and stabilize the incident. Those are going to be your three paramount pieces when you're developing incident objective. But as far as overall operational priorities, you also got to look, look for and provide for your basic human needs, the restoration of essential utilities, be water, power, communications, restoring essential program functions. What, what do you as municipality provide that is essential to, to your residents? Coordinate among appropriate stakeholders. Again, we, we live in a diverse community, much more diverse than, than we used to. So there are a lot of different stakeholders now in the community. And they all, they all have a voice, and they should have a, they should have a voice at the, at the table with these incidents. Also got to be keenly aware of any potential political issues, financial and legal concern. And again, this, this joint information system slide, which is basically the same as we talked about as we went over earlier with the emergency operations system, or emergency operations center. So what you will, what you'll see is, in the joint information system, is the, you'll see the PO represents and advises the incident commander and manages initial media and public inquiries. And then they'll, they'll throw stuff up to the joint information center where they'll look at critical emergency information, crisis communications, and any public affairs issues. They'll also coordinate, go back and forth with the EOC to make sure that the message that's being sent out is, is the correct message prior to being sent out. And then someone from the joint information center will, will be the spokesperson and disseminate that information. The public information officer, they, they may be, they may be on the scene, they may not be. And you can have separate POs for the on-scene, incident command, the EOC, and you may have them for the senior official and act group as well. So we talked about how initially, if you're, if you're on the scene of an incident, then you're probably going to call the dispatch location or emergency communication center for additional resources if needed. And then that goes to the specific group you're calling. If, if they can't fill it from dispatch, then again, any, any state resource that's needed, then it, it has to go through the emergency operations center to be filled. We talked, I think we've covered this slide in its entirety. Okay, so a review of, of the senior official role in, in this unit. Again, ensuring the safety of citizens, protection of property, ensuring the continuity of government, adding any specific legal authorities, disaster declarations, evacuation, states of emergency, or other protective actions, delegating authority for incident command, coordinating with the PO to get the media and public informed, requesting assistance from state agencies through the EOC, resolving any resource allocation conflicts, coordinating with other senior officials and whole community partners, and participating in a multi-agency coordination group. Okay? Yeah? If I have any questions on that unit? Okay, so how do we, how do we prepare for, for incident? You know, EM is a constant process of evaluating things and conducting risk assessments, thing, you know, thing, things like that. First, you know, you have to identify and assess the risk that your community has as a, as a whole. You know, what, what are they? What's your most hazardous, hazardous risk that you think you may face? And then what, what, how do you begin to evaluate your capability requirements as, as an organization? What do you have currently? And then what do you, how do you build upon those? How do you, how do you sustain those? And, and of the resources that you have, how long can you sustain them without needing outside assistance? And how are you going to, how are you going to deliver what you're capable of doing? How are you going to, how is that delivery piece going to go? You have to validate, validate your delivery process. Then it's a constant review and update. You may have new risks that come up, and you may have new, new capabilities as well. So it's a constant evaluation process of that is, is part of the preparedness piece. You also have to look at your emergency operations plan. And I know all municipalities are a signature of the county's emergency operations plan. But you also have to, have to look in there as far as, if you have any specific preparedness plans just for Waxall, and make sure they're, they're aligned with the NMS terminology and systems, and make sure that they cover all hazards. You know, we are susceptible to a lot of different hazards here, and you need, need to be prepared for that. Think about doing, or basically doing some delegation of authorities where only thing you've got to do is insert, insert names here, so to speak. Make sure that process is, is validated. So it, you know, hopefully, it won't be so cumbersome i- if you have to do it. And then, you know, include up-to-date information. And this, this is where we, we all struggle with. And I know the county's emergency operation plan, at one time, we had it, it was, it was person-specific. So like, if they have said Melody Schuler is responsible for this. Well, over about 10 years ago, that was revised. Instead of being person-specific, it's position-specific. So the town clerk is responsible for this. The public works director is responsible for this. So that way, if you have personnel changes, then you don't have to go in and update those various plans. It's just position-specific. Establish resource management systems. Think about it, you know, do you have an adequate tracking system for the inventory and resources that, inventory logistics that the town owns now? Do you have a good system of how to track that? And, and who is it issued to? And if somebody, somebody else comes in to your jurisdiction that needs that, you know, what is your, how can it be easily assigned to them? How are you going to manage volunteers? You're, you're either, you've got to find a way to do that. Because in a lot of these disaster situations, volunteers come out of the woodwork. And they're going to, a lot of times, they're going to operate whether you really want them to or not. So you've, you've got to find a way to harness them. And, and maybe, you know, have a volunteer coordinator for, for a certain type. Demobilizing and recalling resources. Again, that, that comes back into even something as, even something like calling back town employees for, for events. Do you, do you have a process in place for that? Then financial tracking reimbursement and, and, and reporting. If, you know, they'll, they'll get down to, on the, on the HR side, they'll get down to your If, you know, they'll they'll get down to on the on the H R side, they'll get down to your how much you make hourly, your your fringe benefits calculation, they'll get way deep in the weeds there on on reimbursement stuff. So being aware of of how that operates. Mutual aid assistance agreements for obtaining resources, facilities, services and other support during an incident. Do those, do those exist? Communications and information systems policies or or policies and procedures in place. Can, is there, is there communications and information systems plan? Can responders from different agencies or mutual aid assistance partners communicate with each other? They can, they can here. And also, we have a, we have a cache of 800 radios that if needed, we can, we can deploy. We have 20 of them. And then the state also has additional caches of radios that we have access to in the event that we date them. Is there a plan or budget for maintaining or replacing emergency communication system? And I think all the municipalities or or have the ability to utilize the Everbridge system that that we have now. So that that's a very good piece. And then also with the budget for maintaining the radios. Training credentialing and exercise. You know, and and I applaud you, you all for taking the opportunity and taking the time to to do this today. Because as as a as a whole, this is the, this is the first time, and I've been teaching this for 12 years. This is the first time that a entire body of government has taken this at one time. So I I think that that is to be, that's to be extremely commend. But, you know, train, training is a part of it and staying up to speed on on things that are going on. Do you have sufficient people and personnel within within the town to feel a different position? I know Kevin has 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 come to the E O C during since we've been in a COVID response and he and he's done, he served as plan section chief several times. And and I, you know, your your public information officer has been integrated within the our joint information center as as well. Verifying that personnel meet the criteria for for training. You know, everybody needs to have the the online courses, I S. 100, 200, 700 and 800. Everybody needs that. And then I know we've taught the intermediate and advanced instant command in in Waxall last year, or maybe it was the first this year. So, you know, senior, you know, senior department staff, they definitely need that. And then even doing tabletop exercises. You know, those are, those are a lot easier to do than than the full scale, however, the full scale is is really good, too. And, you know, participating in that exercise, doing a doing a tabletop exercise of how how do you declare a state of emergency, what are the hoops that you have to jump through to do that? You know, things of that nature, who's responsible? Continuous improvement, having debriefings after after the incident and picking them analyzing. You know, these, these shouldn't necessarily be finger pointing sessions on well, you from your department didn't do this right. But think about how organizationally across across the spectrum, how we can improve and how how we can do better. And then, you know, having that corrective action report to to follow up on to say, okay, this department is responsible for this. And this department is responsible for this aspect of it. But you also have to have that follow up piece because a lot of times corrective action reports are created and then there's no follow up. And if there's no follow up, then those corrective actions are never taken. And then you're back to, you're back to the same same problems again for the next incident. These are some additional resources that that you may, that you have access to, that that will be good. The NIMs doctrine and supporting guides. I C S Resource Center and then additional, there's some additional NIMs training here on training dot fema dot gov. All right, so this is, this is just basically the the wrap up. And there's really not not much, not much, not much in this unit. So with that, I will open it up for any questions or comments that you have.
Well, it's been quiet out there for one, but a lot of information. And John, thank you very
Welcome very much.
That's a lot of work put together and to to Melody as well for hurting us in all at one time. I think that's a great idea. I think the other, like I said, John, there's the first time in 12 years that you've been doing this and you've got us all together. I think that's very important to do as we hear the message at the same time and hopefully take the same takeaways. But John, thank you for all that you do, both for the county and in our community. And as you mentioned, it it seems that we are having a few marriages between some of our personnel and the county's personnel, which I'm I'm actually really enjoying from a personal standpoint, I'm enjoying those relationships being reestablished and even created as well. So thank you for that. I know Kevin's working on our individual plan. I kind of realize that we have to be a little standalone because there may be there may be a situation where the county or the state or the Fed may not want to engage. And so I think, you know, having this kind of information for us at the core, for our own specific individual purposes here in town is very important. So Kevin, I think you're still on there and I really, I really do appreciate you connecting us with John to be able to do this. Very important work and probably will generate a few more questions as we go through and complete our E O P. As you're working on now. What you and I talked briefly the other day, Kevin, on this, but what's, what do you think the timeline might be for this?
If you're talking about a full E O P, some of the the consulting firms I've talked to, that they'll give you a full proposal and and they're usually within six months, they have a full, a full plan which involves a continuity of government, continuity of operations, some risk assessments and also some other things. So it actually goes pretty quick, they get a lot of information in a in a fairly short amount of time. Because they know that when you, when a municipality reaches out for a full plan, it's it's not something that needs to take very long because as we know, and just in this year, things can happen at the drop of a hat. So you have to be prepared for for anything. So.
It seems like we have a great resource, at least on my screen, center screen and John. And so I would certainly, I certainly really enjoy seeing you guys work together on this, pull this up. And John, whatever we can do as a town to do things better as well. I mean, we had this, we had an event here last week that really brought us all together from an ops side. And from my view, anyway, being there on the ops team review before they went out, I was pretty humbled and pretty impressed.
That's right.
Thank you for that because I know all you guys had a role in it. So thank you very much. Any other questions for John before we might sign off on this?
I just had a quick question, who from the town is going to have any kind of involvement in the bumping of the E O P?
It would, it would involve pretty much every department of the town. I'm and and John, you may be able to shed a little bit more light. I know it'll involve a- any town staff that would have any any major role, any of the divisions. I would assume also it does, there is a an elected officials role in the the full planning. Obviously, police and fire, public works, things like that. I don't know if any, what else would be involved.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah, it it would evolve, it would really, as Kevin mentioned, involve every department in the town as well as the the town manager. And it would also have an elected official involvement because you all would have to obviously adopt the the emergency operations plan.
John, how was it developed in the county? Obviously, it started somewhere at some point in time to what we have today. So how did that process go? Did you have, besides the department heads, county manager? And so how did, how did that work? How did that get coordinated?
Well, I can't speak to the to the initial development, but I can speak to, you know, we have revised the emergency operations plan several times since I've been here. And typically how that has worked is there has been work groups that have been established or, you know, there's different annexes and different sections of the emergency operations plan. So maybe public works may be responsible for, let's say, debris management or whatever. So it may be that that annex may be given to to public works to to work on and then come back to the really to the local emergency planning committee, the L A P C. And come back and give their feedback on changes that they thought needed to be made to specific sections of the emergency operations plan. And then it is approved by the, the changes are approved by the L A P C. After, and then it goes to the Board of Commissioners, in our case, for, you know, for approval. And the, you know, there has to be a public hearing and and everything on that. So there's, there can be public, public input and obviously any changes that you know, commissioners, council won't be made, you know, we take a look at those.
Right, well, there's a another part of the template then for Kevin to go sit through a little bit. And just make sure again, we have, you know, all the input, we've got such great resources around us and what a great start we have. And we didn't do it all the way around, we will now. I see our town manager wants to weigh in a little bit here, if you could, Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure the board is aware is that we do have some funds programmed into this upcoming budget this year, 2021, for assistance on this plan.
Great. We'll try not to use them all or we'll be very efficient when we use them all. So appreciate that, thank you. John, again, thank you very much for spending your afternoon with us and helping us through this process. Again, I know you and Kevin will work closely on it. We rely on, you guys have traveled down the road before us against home instances. And it's a great learning period, I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be able to be with you. And again, if if there are any questions, feel free to get them to Kevin or or email me, give me a call and I'll be glad to to help all I can.
That's great. If there are no other comments by any of the commissioners, anyone else? Looks like we're clear, we're getting ready to go to the next one. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn. And it's a work session, so we don't have to, we can just adjourn it, huh?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that. We can just adjourn, how's that? All right, everybody, we'll see you in a little bit. Again, thank you very much for all of you guys participating, taking the time out of your days today to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.